Welcome, everybody, to today's City Council meeting of March 10. My name is Wade Plott, I'll be acting as Deputy Mayor on behalf of Mayor Clayton, who is in Edmonton with meetings with our ministers. So we'll call the meeting to order and we'll do our National Anthem, please. Welcome to our very own Tenille Towns for that rendition of Oh Canada. From there, we will move on to our land acknowledgement. The city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver, Crini, Cree, Tenay, and Métis people as the original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on Treaty A territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. Okay, and we'll look for an adoption of the previous council minutes. Councillor Blackmore. Oh, sorry, a very important one I missed, he's rushing along here. I'm gonna go to our CAO with an unfortunate message.
Thank you, Chair Plott. As per the Municipal Government Act, I'm here to inform council that Wendy Bosch has provided me with a letter of resignation. As per the Municipal Government Act, that letter took effect as soon as I received it. And I'm also required under the Municipal Government Act to inform council at the first council meeting, which is today. So with that, councillor Bosch's resignation is in effect. And council is not required to have a by-election, as we are past the January 1 date of an election here. And I'd be happy to answer any follow-up questions from that.
Okay, thank you, CEO Burke. Councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Chair Plott. I am curious, just for the sake of the community, so they know, so we could hold an election if we chose to, correct?
Thanks, Chair Plott. That is correct. Council may choose to hold a by-election. Looking at some of our recent experience with by-elections, the last by-election cost the city $125,000. With inflation and some of the new requirements for voter registration and paper counting of ballots, a tight estimate would be approximately $150,000 to run a by-election at this time. Likely it'd be a little bit more. There are some uncertainties, as this is the first, this would be the first occurrence under the new requirements of the province. Also, looking at timelines, the last by-election took approximately three months. We probably could shave a few days off of that, but a realistic scenario would be that it would be $150,000 in three months before a new candidate could be in office.
Councillor Bressi?
Yeah, and thanks, I appreciate that information. And I know I have had a few members of the community ask if I support holding an election. Personally, I really do take seriously having nine voices around here, but to give somebody four months in office isn't really a lot of time to get things done, especially when you take into account that we don't really do, the last month or two of a term, we really are just putting the bow on things. We're not, I don't think we're gonna be willing to start something significantly new that somebody felt they got elected in. So spend $150,000 to give somebody four months, I don't think would be a responsible use of our dollars. Also, I am concerned about, there are new election rules this year that our staff have to figure out, and this election is gonna look a little bit differently. And for me, I think the priority should be on giving our attorney-in-chief the ability to run a very awesome and a very well-run general election, not running a by-election that, again, will only give somebody four months in this role if they were successful. And so I appreciate the information. And just, if the community's wondering why I don't personally support an election, that's why I wouldn't. And I encourage my colleagues also not to push for elections to be held.
Okay. Fair comments, Councillor Bressi, tend to echo those. I agree with you, I think that, as CEO Burke mentioned, it's not required. And so we'll move on with our agenda. So we'll go to our adoption of previous city council meetings, and I'll look to Councillor Blackmore, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Plott. I guess we don't need any kind of motion to accept Wendy's resignation? Okay. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held February 24th as presented.
Thank you for that motion. Please vote. Mayor Clayton, how do you vote?
Mayor Clayton, how do you vote? Mayor Clayton, how do you vote? Mayor Clayton, how do you vote?
In favor. Thanks for that. And now we'll move to our adoption of the agenda, and I'll go to Councillor O'Connor, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wade Plott. I'd like to move council adopt the agenda with the addition of item 10.2, Correspondence, Aquitara Utilities, Inc.
Okay. Seeing nobody in the queue, please vote.
Bressi in favor?
Mayor Clayton in favor?
That carries as well. So we have no delegations, so we'll start heading to our reports, and we'll go to our council approve the deputy mayor and committee reports. And I'll just look to administration to introduce, please. I'm not sure from administration. Sorry, my apologies, we just, as we had, just accepted the resignation of councillor Bosch, we have to readjust some of our standing committees and boards. I'll look to CEO Burke.
So with councillor's resignation on February 25th, there are some proposals here to realign board and committee appointments, as well as the deputy mayor's schedule. So those are here for council, as required, for council to approve.
Okay, thanks for that intro. Councillor Thieson.
Yeah, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Plott. I would move that council approve the deputy mayor and committee appointments from March to October 2025 as presented. Just speaking to this, as CEO and deputy mayor Platt mentioned, with councillor Bosch's resignation, we've had to parse some things out. So there's a bit of a sharing of deputy mayor duties over the next four weeks, as well as some changes to our standing committees and external committees as well. So I'd encourage everyone to approve this.
Okay. Appreciate the motion. Councillor Thieson, councillor O'Connor.
Yes, I discussed with the mayor this morning that I sit on a committee called the Invest Northwest Strategy Committee, and it's not on the list. So unless it's called something else, so I'd like to request that this be submitted as an add-on to this Legislative Services meeting.
Okay, I'll just look to...
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Plott. That one was a separate motion, and it was already made, and that one will still stand. It has been updated on the city board and committee website.
Okay, thank you. I just noticed that, so thank you very much.
So we will just go back to the main motion, as I see no other people in queue. Please vote.
Bressi in favor.
Councillor O'Connor in favor.
That carries. So we'll head into our committee business, and we'll start with our Investment and Strategy Committee, and I'll look to Councillor Bressi, please.
Thank you, councillor Plott. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Investment Strategy Committee as presented.
Okay, thanks for that, councillor Bressi.
And I will be voting in favor.
Mayor Clayton, how do you vote?
It just hasn't popped up yet.
And that carries. You had a few items of business, councillor Bressi.
Yes, thank you councillor Plott. So I'm just multitasking, so I can re-log into eScribe and hopefully actually vote. So correct me if I'm wrong, but I think my first motion is, I would move that council approve the grant recommendations as found in Appendix A.
That is correct. So this is grant recommendations. I'll look for discussion or debate on this first motion. Okay, seeing none, please vote. And that carries. Back to you, councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you. And my apologies, I missed speaking to those briefly, but those were recommendations that went through our Pursuit Events Excellence Committee, so got vetting and got recommendations coming from some awesome community volunteers we have that help us do our duty diligence and do this work. And the next motion I'm gonna make is the council approve allocation of the 2025 Large Scale Tourism Grant funding in the amount of $50,000, the 2025 Grand Con event, and allocation of the 2025 Large Scale Tourism Grant funding in the amount of $50,000, the 2025 Grand Prairie Traditional Powwow. Just to speak to this, the Large Scale Tourism Grant is a funding bucket that council's created to help large-scale events that will be attracting thousands of people to our community get off the ground and spend a few years being sustainable so that they can get their footing. These are two events that have happened in the past but are still building themselves out, and I think they're well worth our support because they're bringing great things to our community. And more importantly, for this grant funding bucket, they are bringing people to town who are spending money on hotels, meals, retailers, and all those other economic activities we want to encourage.
Thanks for that, councillor Bressi. I've seen nobody in queue, so I just have a question for admin myself, as I wasn't on this committee when it come. Just reading in the report, it says under Grand Con and actually Powwow, they're not hitting their numbers as far as how many people are supposed to be traveling from outside of the district. I'm just curious why admin wanted to support that if they're not meeting our criteria.
There we go. Thank you for the question. So we have recommended in the past a lot of groups that don't quite make the criteria. We did only have the three applications this time, so we still recommended the two as they're still within their infancy and still eligible for the grant. So we wanted to give them the opportunity to continue running these events with support.
Okay. And just one other question, is there another intake period this year, or would these closed off, would this close off our large-scale tourism? Even if there was money that was left in the fund, I guess, if we approved this today, that'll be totally subscribed. But if there was money left, would there be another round of intakes?
Typically, no, but if there was funds left over, we would likely put it back out for opportunities to apply.
Okay. I'm wondering if councillor Bressi, if you wouldn't mind splitting the motion.
Yeah, my understanding is that's, any member of council can request that, and it's the discretion of the chair, so.
So if you could split the motion, I would like to separate Grand Con and Powwow individually, please.
Yeah, so I think you just call for the vote on them separately.
All right, I'll look to legislators to set that up for me. For us. Okay, so the first one's for $50,000 to 2025 Grand Con event. See nobody in the queue, discussion or debate, so please vote. Pardon me? Oh, sorry, in favor? Didn't pop up, sorry. And that carries, and so we'll go to the next round.
$50,000 in grant funding to the 2025 Grand Prairie Traditional Powwow.
Okay. Any discussion or debate on this one? Councillor Blackmore.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Plott. Ms. Bieberdorff, I know that historically, the Grand Powwow has had difficulty tracking where people come from at the door. I'm wondering, as this is a criteria for this grant, if we've had discussions with them about how to ensure that that tracking does take place, or to come up with suggestions to make sure their numbers can be filed at the end?
Yes, thank you, Chair Plott. We have had that conversation with them, and I know they were working at that at Bonnetts, trying to track the postal codes at the door. It is being held at Evergreen Park this year, so that's a conversation we'll have to have with them about what that looks like at Evergreen Park.
Just while I have you there, same question on that, is, so looking at their budgets, we're just over, well, over 25% of the budget for this year, 22% of the budget. That number's kinda held the line for the last little while. If we weren't funding this, would this just be coming at a loss for Powwow to run this event?
Thank you for the question. I would assume they would have to obtain additional grants or sponsorship to make their event successful. I do know they did apply for roughly $18,000 from the county, and they did receive about $10,000 gift and kind from Evergreen Park as well. But I believe they would have to fundraise additional money to cover the cost of the event, or reduce the number of services they're providing.
Yes, for me, I'm just gonna be, I'm struggling with giving the full amount on this one. They haven't met our criteria. We're paying substantially for the amount, and honestly, this year it's not even the city, so I'm struggling with the full amount. But I'll go to councillor O too, and see what my other colleagues are thinking.
Yeah, I was just wondering if the applications were filled out properly this year for this event?
Thank you, yes, we actually have a new online portal, and they can't submit until they fully complete the application form and attach all the documents through the portal.
Because I know that was a problem for a number of years. Thank you.
Okay, seeing nobody, oh, councillor Burke.
I'm also in the queue.
Oh, sorry, Mayor Clayton.
Yeah, this is something that I'm in favor of. It's a great cultural event, and I know that they've struggled with administration, administrative duties the last couple of years, as per councillor O'Toole's question. But I think going forward, knowing that there is some money on the line, they're doing their best to get those administrative duties, which are all volunteer in line, so I'm quite confident that this year they'll come through.
Okay, thanks for that, councillor Burke. Mayor Clayton.
Thanks, Chair Plott. I appreciate your concerns, Chair Plott, and I had a couple of questions for Ms. Bieberdorff. I'm just struggling with my eScribe today to pull up the report, but if I recall correctly, they had approximately 2,000 people on site per day, is what we saw, 2,500, I think, I think it's on it. So they're not meeting the total visitors in our expectation, as I understand. However, we don't have great data in regards to the other criteria, that the visitors be 100 kilometers away, last, the request is $50,000, and last time, our total contribution was gift and kind. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. They had gift and kind for Bonnetts.
And they, remind me of the gift and kind amount?
Off the top of my head, I don't know the exact number. I wanna say it was around the $20,000 mark, maybe 25,000.
Okay. Okay, I thought it was a little bit higher than that, but that's fine, regardless. I think that this event is something that we as a council agreed would be a great addition for our community to learn more about cultural Powwows, to have a better integration of indigenous events into our community. We, to be honest, we were the ones that initiated the conversation, saying, why don't you take your Powwow indoors? It may be more conducive to people experiencing it, as opposed to outdoor, it has weather variables. It's really in its infancy as an indoor event. But to councillor Plott's comments, I don't love that it's leaving the city, and then that in turn, the city will be the largest funder. I do want to, however, support this event. And so, Ms. Bieberdorff, knowing that the last couple of years it hasn't met the criteria, what would we do, two questions, what would we do for other events that hadn't, in a couple of years, met the criteria? Would we still suggest to council, would we still recommend to council to support them if it was another event, say Grand Con hadn't met the criteria? Or Bear Creek Folk Fest, or other ones that we've funded through large-scale tourism in the past? And then my second question is, if it wasn't through this fund, what other opportunities are there from City of Grand Prairie funding?
Thank you, Chair Plott. So I probably can answer both of those questions in one. So if we have other grant applications within large-scale tourism, and there's others that meet the criteria, we can either reduce the amount that we're recommending for this group, or we could recommend that they apply for festival funding, which would give them up to 14,000 per year, or they could explore other avenues like sponsorship.
So would it, Chief, or councillor Plott, if you wouldn't mind if I had another question?
Go ahead.
So would it be fair to say that administration is recommending this based on the number, on the uptake of the applications? Or are they basing the recommendation of 50,000 because that's what they asked for, and you have confidence in the event being successful and growing this year?
Thank you, Chair Plott. It would be a little bit of both. We didn't have things like the air show this year, so we didn't receive an application from them. We only had the three and only felt that the two met the criteria. So, one, we had funds available, and, two, we do feel that the event is gonna grow moving into the new location, larger space, air conditioning, all those components, camping.
So, last question, Chair Plott, if council were to approve $25,000, because we think that this is a good addition to the region, you know, we're supportive of the Powwow as an event, it's an event that's not in our city, and our other large-scale tourism events are in the city, but we think that it's good as a cultural event and good to be on the list of regional events that take place. So if we were to only fund $25,000, do you think the event would continue? Would it be scaled back? Do you have any information to sort of help us with that decision?
Thank you. I don't have that information right in front of me right now. I would say they would have to fundraise the additional money. I don't think they're intending to make money off this event, so they would have to fundraise or find additional grants and sponsorship to run the event as is, or scale back some of the components of the event.
So, Chair Plott, my concern is primarily that this event isn't in the city. I can't think of another large-scale tourism event that we've funded that wasn't in the city. And so maybe that's my, another question for administration, has there been other large-scale tourism events that apply? You know, I know that multi-sport games have been qualified for this funding, but the majority of them have been located in the city. Has there been other large-scale tourism events that have received such significant amounts of funding that haven't been in the city?
Thank you, Chair Plott. Yes, the most recent ones would have been the stomped when they were still funded through this stream of funding.
Right, okay. Okay, thanks for the information.
Councillor Blackmore.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Plott. Ms. Bieberdorff, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems, from my memory, that last year they did not apply for large-scale tourism. We ended up piecemealing together a bunch of funding to ensure their event took place. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Most of it was gift and kind.
Okay. And so I feel that this year, they've made strides with organization, they've managed to complete their applications, and not just us, but to other organizations. And I think that's very positive. So, while I agree with Mayor Clayton, it's disappointing that they're no longer operating within the city, I think it's challenging for us to tell them at this point in time that we're not prepared to fund them to the full 50,000. I would personally support the original motion, knowing that going forward, we have options for asking additional questions next year, such as, did they meet their criteria? Did they track their postal codes? And how successful have they been to continue to clean up the organizational side, which we know they've struggled with in the past?
Thanks for that, councillor Blackmore. Councillor Burke?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor Plott. Just commenting around the county versus the city, I know that, and I don't even know the dollar total, but Growing the North was a significant event that the city was a major sponsor in, and that was in its entirety out in the county. And that's purely based on the facility that they have, that the city doesn't have. And two things that I understand with the Powwow that were important to them is, one, air conditioning, it was extremely hot in the arena, which was quite hard on some of the elders and the dancers, because they're all dressed up in regalia, and it got quite hot in there. We just don't have the same air conditioning that Evergreen Park does. But camping was also something that was important, where that is an integral part of many Powwows that they camp around there and around the event. And again, we are in a downtown facility, so based on a couple of those things, again, the city just doesn't have the building that they require, but I'm sure if we did, they would be happy to have it in the city.
Thanks for those comments, councillor Burke. Councillor Bressi?
Great, thank you. So you can remind me again, so their current budget is 225,000. What was their budget last year? Do we know?
I don't have that information with me at the moment.
Okay. So do we know why the request, so this request for more than double what we gave last year? What I'm trying to figure out is, do we know if there's anything that they're actually getting with that request? Is that money being put towards an expanded event? Is it making it for other revenue streams that have fallen behind? I'm just trying to figure out, why do they need the extra money?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Plott. They do have significant rental costs. They did get some gift and kind, but there is a big portion of rental costs required out at Evergreen Park, and we waived a lot of the fees when it was held at Bonnetts, so it's significantly more expensive to host there.
Am I misremembering the report? Thanks, I thought, if I remember the conversation in committee, that $22,775 that we gave, that chosen the report, is us giving them last year, I thought that included gift and kind to them. Do you know?
Thank you, yes, that does include the gift and kind from last year.
Okay. I, yeah, for me, I am, I gotta admit, I am struggling with the full $50,000 ask here. That being said, I definitely want to support them. Something, if somebody does have a different amount that they're gonna move, we amend this, I'd potentially be open to considering that. But for me, it just more is value around, is this money actually needed, or is it just wanted? Is the city just? So I just don't understand enough about why this amount. But for me, them being out of the city doesn't bother me as much, as councillor Berg under shared, I think there are good operational reasons they need to move out of the city, but also, there's nothing commercial on the south side of the city. So everybody who comes to it, they're staying in City of Grand Prairie Hotels, they're going to City of Grand Prairie Restaurants. For me, this grant fund really is about economic development, and I think it's just as likely to spur on our economy being in Evergreen Park as it is in Bonnetts Energy Center. It might feel very different if it was being held in Clermont, but the fact that it's south of the city, I feel pretty comfortable supporting it with a grant meant to boost on city economy.
Thanks for those comments. Councillor O'Connor?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Plott. I'm kinda tossed as well. I agree with councillor Berg that they're moving for health reasons and to respect the elders in a more cooling environment. But I also agree with councillor Blackmore that we should not change the game this late in the game for them. So I prefer us to give them the full amount and then have a more accountability and expectations for the next time. So I will support the main motion, but not this amendment.
Councillor Thieson. So just so you know, councillor O'Connor, this is the only motion, there's just the $50,000 for Powwow, there's no amendments on it, it's just, yeah. Councillor Thieson.
Yeah, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Plott. I was gonna say that, but it seems like there's a theme going around here today. I wanna talk about GICs, wanna talk about air conditioning, wanna talk about a lot of the stuff that's already come out. I guess the one thing that I should note is that in our large-scale tourism funding, it's not predicated to be in the city of Grand Prairie. The rules are, under section five, this, sorry, section four, the event takes place in the city, or in the county of Grand Prairie number one, at Evergreen Park, or the Crosslink County Sportsplex. So even though we have concerns that this tourism event is, might go into the county, it's perfectly built into our, into our bylaws for that, perfectly built into the funding of the large-scale tourism procedure. So I think that sort of makes that point moot. Now, just to speak to this, I agree wholeheartedly with councillor Blackmore, councillor O'Connor in the funding for this event. I'd be probably more inclined to not want to fund the event if, after three years in a row of coming at the 11th hour, that they came again at the 11th hour. This time, they've got all their ducks in a row, they're putting everything together organizationally, and I think they're giving themselves an opportunity to grow in a venue that's going to accommodate all their needs, as well as be a tourism draw to the region in Grand Prairie specifically. So I encourage council to keep the funding as is, because if we don't, then it's just, there's no other intakes. So this just sort of sits there, into a pot, and eventually it'll go into general revenue unless we have an emergency use for it later, like we did with the Powwow last year. So I strongly encourage everyone to support this motion as it is.
Councillor, thanks councillor Thieson. I just wanna ask... I just want to ask admin, when I look at the report, it says it's a three day event. And so we'd had this report, we funded it in 18, 23, and 24. Have we collected data from any of those years? Have they given us good reasonable data in any one of the years we funded them?
Thank you. In previous years, because they didn't receive a grant, there was no requirements to provide back data on each of those events because it was gift and kind or a combination of other funding sources. There was no grant agreement that was signed.
So we don't, do we know how many people attend the event? Like, I see it's projecting 2,500 a day, but do we actually have numbers of how many people have attended in previous years? Because I appreciate it comes from different funding sources, but on our, we have funded this three previous times now.
Yeah, thank you. We do we do track the numbers. I don't have them right in front of me right now, but the projection of 2,500 is based on previous year's attendance.
I'll just tip my hand. As much as I'd like to support it, I can't support the amount of 50,000. I appreciate it's a fund that we can utilize in other ways, and if we don't use it, it won't go prescribed potentially, but it will go back into general revenues, which is still has a tax impact on our community. I don't like, I guess for me, I don't like that we have an organization, whether it be powwow or anybody, if they're not doing their paperwork properly and they're not fulfilling our million criteria, I have a hard time that we're funding them. And so powwow aside, it could be any organization. I'm struggling with it. We're giving them twice as much as last year and then hoping that we're still going to get data from them. So unless somebody's going to make a motion for a smaller amount, unfortunately, I can't support the full 50,000. Mayor Clayton, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thanks. I just a couple of comments to Counsel Berg's comment. We actually don't give, we give very minimal money to Growing the North. We have a gift and kind agreement for a few thousand dollars. It's very small amounts that we give to Growing the North. To Counsel Thieson's comments, yeah, I appreciate the comments about being in the city or not in the city and the large scale tourism. For me, it's not about the location. I, as you know, I'm a big proponent for things that happen for the region. It's that we are the largest supporter, if this motion is supported, of the event that isn't in the city. And so not about where it lands. I think the Evergreen Park location because of camping is probably a better location for this event, camping being an important part and component. And and as mentioned by somebody in regards to the comfort for elders and the air conditioning. So less about where it lands, more about the fact that we're the largest supporter of it. Question for administration, you mentioned that the county was asked to support for $18,000. Do you know if there's gift and kind on top of that? Or was that the total contribution?
Thank you, Chair Plott. That was the total cash contribution. The gift and kind, I believe, was directly from Evergreen Park, 10,000.
Okay, okay, perfect. Well, that's good to hear. I think that's something that's so valuable to the region, it needs to have participation from all proponents of this event. Yeah, but to Counsel O'Connor's point, and somebody else made it a mention as well, this event is fairly far down the road. It'd be really unfortunate now for them to have to pivot if the amount was less. I do appreciate Counsel Black or Plott's comments that this needs to be a consideration. So I strongly encourage us and with that maybe administration, and it may have subsequent motion that will help us not be in this position at the 11th hour next year because this event is months away. And so in order to, if council were to support less right now, it would have significant impact and really could be detrimental to the planners. So I will have a subsequent motion following this one. Thanks.
Thanks for that, Mayor Clayton. Seeing nobody else in the queue, I guess no motions being up. Please vote.
Bressi in favor.
That carries. Mayor Clayton, you still have your hand up. Did you want to come back to it now or later in the?
Yeah, you bet. I would direct administration to bring back a, or actually not a report. I would direct, and Ms. Biebertorf, if you may already be doing this, I just want to recognize that I direct administration to work with the powwow, Grand Prairie Traditional Powwow organization and come back to council with information of opportunities before the end of this year. I think that if council is going to be making decisions on financial opportunities, that we need to be in that conversation earlier. And I think that our role, as mentioned before, is to support this event. We want to see it grow. We want to see it be better. And if the next council chooses to fund this less, they're going to need the information in front of them much earlier than than it is currently. So if the motion, as I mentioned, administration to work with the organization and come back to council in the fall of 2025 with information of where the the 2026 powwow is headed, because that by then you'll have information of how 2025 went, you'll have a new council and potentially new priorities, you'll have information from the organization of what they're planning for 2026. And I think we can try to be that catalyst and help the organization be in front of planning and really support them in their planning needs. So if we start those questions, conversations potentially earlier, maybe that will help. And if you're already doing that, I apologize. I just would like it documented because I think it's important for not only the organization, but for the elected officials to know what the event is and what the future of the event could be. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Mayor Clayton. The the motion went on rescribe. If you wanted to take a look, I just have a question for admin, just just so I fully understand the large scale. Once we've, now that that's been approved, the 50,000 for powwow, they'll get that funding no matter what, and then they'll bring a report back. Is there has there ever been a thought about putting some of a contingent on actually give us the information? I just, I guess my concern is, is if any organization we funded, if they didn't supply us any any information afterwards, would there be any repercussions to that organization?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So now that they're receiving funding under large scale tourism, they will be required to enter into a grant funding agreement. So there'll be terms and conditions in that agreement, and if they don't meet those terms and conditions, then they likely wouldn't be recommended for future funding.
Okay, thanks for that. Mayor Clayton, did you have a chance to look at the motion?
Looks good, thanks.
Okay. Any comments or quay? No, no debate on it. So please vote on the mayor's motion. And that carries. We'll come back to you, Counsel Bressi, for your next item of business.
Great, thank you, Chair Plott. I would move that council receive, sorry, receive this development incentives and grants program update for information, I guess.
Okay, thanks for that. Counsel Bressi, any discussion or debate? Seeing none? Please vote. Counsel Plott in favor? Mayor Clayton, how do you vote? Oh, thank you. That carries. Back to you again, Counsel Bressi.
Thank you. Not quite sure why we said that to council, but I'll try to catch that next time. Now to do the actual substantial work coming over that, I would move the council approve amendments to policy 357, development incentives and grants program as presented. And maybe I'll actually just leave it leave it there for now because I think the other ones, I think these should probably be split into quite different motions. But to speak to this one, really, there's a few housekeeping amendments here, but the main amendment going on here is we have introduced a municipal fee rebate program for fiber optic cables. So basically, if somebody wants to get more fiber into the ground, we want to make sure we're not taking money away from them as a municipality to incentivize them to actually do something we really need in this community. So these amendments would put that policy into, put that program into this policy so it's easier to find details of.
Thanks for that. Counsel Bressi, seeing nobody in the queue? Please vote on that motion.
Mayor Clayton in favor?
That carries. And back to you again, Counsel Bressi.
Thank you. I'd also move that council increase the budget for the municipal fee rebate program from 700,000 to 1 million dollars, transferring 300,000 from the Economic Recovery Fund. Just speak to this. This municipal fee rebates are when there's projects that we want to see get going in town, such as a large multifamily development. There are hefty inspection fees that come along with that. These fees, they they do cover some hard costs, but most of the costs these are covering are the soft costs of having staff time go into go into doing the inspection work, all of that. And this program is designed just to make it a little bit more cost effective for people to get these projects that we want to get done, done so that they can fill needs in the community and start paying general tax revenue on a recurring basis. Right now, we've had indications there's enough projects in the queue that if we don't increase the amount, there'll be some projects that don't receive this funding, and maybe that might make the difference between them not going forward. So I would increase, I would encourage council to support this motion.
Thanks for that intro. Counsel Bressi in motion? Any conversation to beat? Nobody in the queue, so please vote. And that carries. And so we'll just come back to you, Counsel Bresser, for some meeting highlights, please.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Counsel Blackmore. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Plott. One of the issues that was brought forward and discussed at this meeting is apartment units and how we tax them. We had a request from a delegation at the meeting that we don't tax apartment units over 100,000 until they're once they're through their construction, occupancy, and then for another number of years following. Well, I don't support that because I think it's too extensive. I do believe that there is the opportunity for us to be a little more equitable or even handed in how we approach the construction of large, large apartment buildings, 100 suites or more. And so I would move that we direct administration to bring back a report with options, itemizing opportunities or bring back a report with options to look at how we tax buildings while they're under construction, speaking specifically to buildings of 100 units or more. I'm looking at the CAO to see if that's a motion that is effective for administration because I kind of lost track of where I was partway through the motion.
Okay, thanks for that, Counsel Blackmore. CEO Burke.
All thanks, Deputy Mayor Plott. I'll let our clerk here get the wording, but I think that's sufficient direction for us to to bring back some options for committee and ultimately council consideration.
Thank you. And speaking to that motion, I feel that from the time a shovel goes in the ground until the occupancy permit is delivered, there is reason to not collect property taxes during that period of construction. I think that by making that decision, we give those large scale projects, which have had a lot of trouble getting traction in our community and which our community really, really needs, given our lack of rental space. I feel that this is a way that we can support those large scale developments and yet not be, not not be penalizing our own budget or our own residents in, as, you know, if we're not collecting the taxes, you're simply not collected. It's not like we're paying money out. And so I think that this is a matter that does need to be looked at by administration that does need to be brought back to council for debate at a later time. So I would ask you to support the motion.
Thanks for that, Counsel Blackmore. Mayor Clayton?
Thanks, Chair Plott. I actually support the intent of Counsel Blackmore's motion. I really worry about this delaying what's potentially going to be in the ground this spring. And so I'm wondering if maybe Counsel Blackmore can come back to this with an actual motion. If proponents who have already pulled permits and who are know the criteria that supports our multifamily right now, as in, you know, we've worked on our secondary suites, we've removed development permits and building and building fees, you know, we're really open and to multifamily. We've really fast tracked and supported those proponents who are looking to build multi. Now they know that council is interested in doing something with taxes, I worry about the potential delay that some of them may take. For us, it's about the number of doors we can get built as soon as possible. And so while I support what you're trying to do here, and maybe I'll ask the CAO, is there a motion that makes sense that council can discuss and debate today? If not, maybe we table this this item of incentive grant until we have a chance to talk about this and add to it. I just don't want people holding back on building secondary because in anticipation that council may remove taxes while we're building. So I'll ask the CAO maybe for some advice.
Okay, thanks, Mayor Clayton. CEO Burke, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Plott. Definitely a risk with with looking at future incentives. I don't think we need a specific motion. I think the the direction we have today is that there there's incentive for administration to come back quickly with a report so that this council can weigh in one way or the other with with formal direction. We will move as quickly as possible. I don't have a timeline, but I do think it would benefit from some policy review as well and not just simply a motion outlining exactly. So if there's there's will for us to explore something, we'll do that as quickly as possible and bring that back for for committee and council consideration. One suggestion would be if it came back, I think committee is the better process, but one would be just for us to come directly back to to a future council meeting to to fast track this. But I do think the motion on the floor is sufficient for us to move quickly.
Chair Plott, if so, question for the CAO, then would you be in a position for this to come back to the next council meeting in two weeks? Building season is around the corner, and people will pause waitingness if council has interest in this.
Deputy Mayor Plott, thank you. Tent will be, but as this is a new initiative, I do think it does warrant full full policy and legal review. So that will, we will attempt to bring it back as quickly as possible. That's an excellent target. I'm unable to commit to that until I have looked a little bit further into what what's involved.
Thanks for that, Counsel Bressi.
Great, thank you. No, thank you, Counsel Blackmore for Blackmore for raising this. I do think that our supplementary tax, we charge things that are under progress, does have a role to play because when a building is getting built, it does consume some municipal services, such as it still needs a fire department, it still needs police to respond to it. But right now, I'm really worried that some of these units might not go, especially in impact of some of the tariff issues we have right now, the supply chain issues we have right now. There's more uncertainty now, and there's more potential of a building taking a little bit longer than it might take during more rational times. And for that reason, I think the more we can de-risk potential delays, the more we should, given the light of what's going on in the economy right now. And so I'm glad that this motion's coming forward and look forward to supporting it. And I hope that in two weeks, we get to have this debate, but totally also do understand that there's complications here and we want to do it right as well.
Thanks for that, Counsel Bressi. Just a question for CEO Burke and potentially the mover of the motion. I'm wondering if we put something at the end of the ocean that said if any grants were done, that we do be retroactive to March 1st. I guess for me, I'm just wondering if we can put some wording in this motion that if a proponent was looking at at doing a project right now, they're not just waiting on us to make a decision. They know that it's retroactive to March 1st. If they haven't pulled a permit now, then ergain. But if they if they're sitting in queue waiting to pull a permit and they're waiting on this, I don't want them waiting. So I'm just wondering if there's a mechanism through legal or look to maybe CEO Burke of how we can maybe look at that motion that we'd signal, we're fine with open for business from a certain point in time. But if this takes a month to figure out, I do not want people waiting till May or June to start a project if they're ready to go now. CEO Burke, is that an option option for us?
Yes, typically, we've done it as soon as there's been council direction. So it might be even today, but March 1st, March 1st would be an option. I don't have that in front of me to know exactly when different permits have been pulled. But if there was a direction as of today, we we could start, that could be a good starting or March 1st, that could be a good starting point for us to bring back options based on that direction.
So I'll go to Counsel Blackmore first, just to see if she's okay with potentially amending her motion.
I'm I'm happy to have that added to the motion.
Okay. We'll just let legislators work on that. Will I go to Counsel Burke?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I don't think this requires an amendment to this, but just a point that when we do our grants and incentives, we do have an end date, and then it's a chance to review to see whether we want to extend it or end it. I don't want to potentially have tax free grants going in perpetuity. So I would like administration to explore some type of end date, be that the end of 2025 or the end of 2026, so that we can reevaluate and look at it again to see what the demand is and and where we are in the economy. Thanks.
Thanks for that. Mayor Clayton?
I think that's a great point by Counsel Berg, and I think administration will just take into consideration aligning this initiative with the end dates of the other ones. So good point, Counsel Berg.
Thanks for the comments. Counsel Blackmore, did you want to close?
Thank you. I do want to close. One of the reasons that this has been on my mind a lot is the fact that we did not receive the Housing Accelerator Grant. And and it's pretty, I think it's fairly clear that we're not going to receive the Housing Accelerator Grant. I don't know. That was that was my read on the situation. And so I And so I think, you know, that was an opportunity for some of our builders to take advantage of, which has disappeared off the table. I don't want projects to grind to a halt because of that. I feel that this kind of hits things in the middle ground where we're still offering support and doing what we can to move projects forward and indicating that those projects are very important to us. And so for these reasons, I would ask you to support the motion and look forward to a report coming back from administration to give us the opportunity for further discussion.
Okay, thanks for the motion. Please vote. That carries, and we'll look forward to that report coming back for some good discussion. We'll go back to you again now, Council Bressi, for your meeting highlights.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. As Council Blackmore highlighted, we did have one delegation come speak to us about a specific project they're working on and asking for, ask for some tax alleviation on that. And although this isn't exactly what they were asking for, I do appreciate Council Blackmore hearing them out and bringing a potential option to council. The one thing I also want to highlight from the chief service area update is in early April, community group funding applications are going to open up with some workshops for groups that want to learn about them late March. So if there's anybody that's involved in nonprofit that should be applying for those grants, please be keeping your eyes out and clearing some time in early April to fill out those applications.
Okay, thank you for that. So we'll go next to our financial and administration committee, and as this is normally, Council Bosch, I'm going to ask if Council Blackmore, yeah, sorry, Public and Protective Services, and that's normally Council Bosch's chair, she's no longer with the organization, can I ask Council Blackmore to introduce, please?
Thank you. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held March 4th as presented.
For that, please vote.
Mayor Clayton, a favor.
You had a couple items of business.
Yes. The Aging Well Together Action Plan was presented at committee. This followed a significant amount of input from stakeholder groups of people who are 55 and older and is building on the information and the wish list that was brought forward by people in that age category. Council, or sorry, administration has done a really great job of building that action plan, and I look forward to seeing how it unrolls in the future. But in the meantime, I would move that council adopt the Aging Well Together Action Plan as presented.
Thank you for that. Council Blackmore, Council Burke.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor Pallott. This was an excellent report and just compliments to the staff that put this together. I was very impressed. So when I say this, it is not with criticism, but more, it's just something that I think that may have been missed. I'd love to see more focus on arts and culture for seniors. I just finished reading a book that I quoted in committee about how arts and culture really helps develop the mind, be it music, pottery lessons, different things like that. We have the facilities here, so just want to remind the people that read the report that it's not forgotten and that we do recognize that Aging Well Together also includes the arts and the culture.
Thanks for those comments. Yeah, the report did have a lot of amazing information, and I think between our census recently and this, there's some amazing data, if you're looking for information on our city, and some great information for economic activity as well. So if nobody else in the queue, we'll vote on that motion, please.
Mayor Clayton, a favor.
And that carries. I'll go to Council Bressi, please.
Great, thank you. I also would like to make a motion that I hope council indulge me in, and that is, I would like to move that we direct administration on bringing back to the appropriate standing committee a report on working with applicable agencies to automatically enroll seniors who qualify in our Recreation Access Program and our Low Transit Programs. And just speak to that, I do know, I talked to residents who qualify for these programs, they don't know they exist, or there's, or especially in the case of seniors, there might be significant barriers to enrolling if they have troubles with technology or they have troubles getting around. I really think that as people age, it's important that as much as possible, they're able to get around our community on transit, they're able to get out to the East Link Centre, they're able to take part in programs. And I don't think we should create extra barriers for them to enroll. I know that seniors outreach fills out tax returns and would pretty quickly be able to know if somebody should be applying for our access programs. And I would sure love to see a process put in place where people could automatically or quickly apply. I don't know if there's other organizations on top seniors outreach, that's why I left this motion broad, but for me, just the more people we can get enrolled, the better. So I hope that council will support this motion. There might be complications I'm not aware of that make this prohibitive, but I'd at least like to know what it would look like to create automatic enrollment if we wanted to.
Thanks for the motion. I think it's a great idea. I'm just, I'm curious, and I guess I'll look to administration with the way their motion's written. Are you comfortable with this motion and feel you can action it the way it's written?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Pallott. Comfortable bringing back a report, already just aware of some, comfortable bringing back a report and we'll identify what's possible and what might be more challenging, so.
Cool.
Accept that.
Yeah, and just speak to it, it's, this is in direction to go do it. I know that this seems easy, but it's really easy as a politician to say, hey, that seems easy. And there's, and administration often comes back with very valid reasons why something we think sounds easy isn't as easy as it actually sounds. And so open to have that discussion, and maybe it is, maybe it isn't a practical idea, I don't know. But it's something that I've been talking about for years, so I feel like I need to actually make a motion at some point to make it happen, not just talk about it.
Well, that's fair. Seeing nobody in the queue, please vote. Okay, we'll come back to Council Blackmore to look at our wildfire mitigation. Somebody loves to talk about trees, so.
Well, thank you, Council Pallott. I do love to talk about trees, but in this case, it's really not trees we're talking about, but all of the understory. I would ask that council support the city's grant application to Phase 2 of the Forest Resource Improvement Association of Alberta, aka FREA, to their community fire guard program. And in speaking to this, we did take, we did make good use of this grant last summer to do a major cleanup of the understory in the area around the water treatment facility. This year, we would move further into the Bear Creek Corridor to continue that protection. We know that the understory does contribute significantly to the opportunity for wildfire to take place, and this is one way that we can mitigate those circumstances. It's not to say that there will never be a forest fire in that area, as there's many types of fire, but it does mitigate those opportunities to some extent. There's a number of phases that will take place over a few years, I believe, in this project, but this is specifically for Phase 2, so I would ask council to support the motion.
Thank you. Council Blackmore, any discussion or debate? I'll just say, I'm looking forward to this. I think it's a great way to help continue to protect our city, and I know a lot of us do use those trails, and that there, there's an enhanced safety component to this as well, I feel like, for people using the trail, so it's kind of a double moment for us. Council O'Toole.
Yes, I'm fully supportive of this. I did have a number of residents that lived up in the Crystal Ridge area last year reach out to me and said they would be willing to help work with the Parks Department as a neighborhood association, that they would love to be able to just pack wood out and maybe possibly cut it up. And I was just wondering what the administration has to say about having a, not employee, but somebody that wants to volunteer to support this program.
Okay, thanks for that question. I'll look to administration. Chief Lemieux.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's certainly something we could look at and work with neighborhood associations. There are some risks involved, but we're certainly not going to close that door, and we'll certainly have a conversation with the neighborhood association to see what can be done. The, that particular area has been brought to our attention and is on the list, but there are many areas that require attention on our list, so it's a matter of prioritizing, but certainly we'll take your information into advice and we'll certainly have a conversation with the neighborhood association.
Thank you very much. No, there's, there are people out there that just want to give back to their program and to their city, and also they live around there and they want to make their part, they want to do their part to support the initiatives that the city is doing, so.
I think it's important to recognize that the material is not removed from the forest, but it's simply shredded or chipped on site, so it creates that duff or that layer of material that stays quite damp and does not really attract fire.
Thanks for that, Council, or Mayor Clayton, sorry.
Thanks, Chair Pallott. Really support this program, think it's a great initiative. Had the opportunity to speak with Minister Lowen this morning in regards to the risks that Alberta may be facing as we head into fire season. Although we look like we're in a better position this year than last, May is the month that is truly the strongest indicator for what our fire season could potentially unfold to be. My question for Chief Lemieux is in regards to the Fire Smarting, which I think is a great initiative. And so providing recommendations to residents to reduce wildfire risk is extremely important. And I'm, what I don't recall in these conversations is how those who are in that corridor that has been assessed to be the high-risk areas, do they put their hand up? Are we going to be knocking on doors? How do the residents that are in those adjacent high-risk areas get involved to have that, their properties fire assessed?
Thank you for the question through the deputy mayor. So a couple ways to do that, certainly we'll be working with our communications department to get the information out there so that people are aware that the risk assessment is a tool that's available to them. But we'll also be visiting, doing some door-to-door into certain neighborhoods that are in those particular areas. So it's a, there's a couple opportunities there, but certainly there'll be a very intensive communication portion of this project.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thanks for that. Seeing nobody in the queue, we will go to the motion. Did you want to close on that, Council Blackmore? Are you good? Please vote. And that carries. Mayor Clayton, I just see your hand up. Did you have something you want to pop in the queue?
Nope, all good.
Okay, thank you. So we'll just go back to meeting highlights, please.
Thank you. The Grand Prairie Police Service is establishing a community standards unit, which will be introduced and comprised of six trained police officers led by an experienced supervisor. This unit is mandated to address the social and civil disorder occurring in the city, primarily downtown and in other affected areas such as the park systems. Additionally, the unit will focus on traffic enforcement and all applicable and appropriate provincial legislation and city bylaws. At the RCMP, the new officer in charge, Superintendent Steve MacLeod, officially started at the detachment February 25th. The Grand Prairie Police Service New Recruit Officer Orientation began February 24th, and this is a three-week program where the new officers will be obtaining their PROS certification and completing multiple other training programs and will be, at the end of it, truly officers. The Housing and Community Development Youth Advisory Council members delivered a presentation to the Grand Prairie Police Commission in February, highlighting their community involvement in the 23-24 year and their commitment to improving youth engagement in the community. As part of the Aging Well Action Plan, the city is partnering with Grand Prairie Primary Care Network to launch a social prescribing initiative for residents 55 and older. And so this program addresses the social determinants of health and helps connect individuals to community supports that complement medical care. The initiative is funded by the Province of Alberta and aims to bridge the gap between healthcare and social services, enhancing overall well-being for older adults in our community. And in January, the city's home support program served 262 residents and conducted 10 new assessments. In, there's nothing like having your page suddenly close. In recreation, the East Link Centre hosted an exciting intermission in the Storm Game on February 28th. Attendees had the chance to learn about membership options and to win a one-year family membership. This engagement continued March 1st with a special one-day punch pass promotion, offering extra punches based on the number of goals the Storm scored during the game. All punch passes sold on March 1st were sold at 12 visits for the price of 10 due to the two goals scored by the Storm. And under events and programming, Canadian rock band Theory of a Dead Man performed a sold-out show at the Bowes. We're looking forward to comedy icon Russell Peters coming and, on March, sorry, on February 8th. And the Storm will host a Four McMurray Oil Barons, they already did, March 7th and 8th, and they will wrap up their regular season on March 14th and 15th against Lord Minister Bobcats. The Storm has already clinched playoff spots, so we're excited about that. And for those with little people, summer camp registration is now open and those spots are filling quickly, so if you wish to send your little people to camp, don't delay. That concludes my report.
Thank you for that, Council Blackmore. Moving on to our Financial and Administrative Services Committee, I'll look to Council Burke.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Pallott. I would like to move council adopt the minutes of the Financial and Administrative Services Committee meeting held March 4th as presented.
Thanks for the motion. Please vote. I'll just come back to Councilor Burke for some business arising. I just did want to ask council if they had any questions before Council Burke makes the motion, because once we make the motion, there's no discussion or debate, as some folks weren't on this committee to ask questions previously. So now would be your time if you had any questions on the next motion. Okay, seeing none, Council Burke.
All right. So I would like to move council give first reading the Borling Bylaw, C-1474 is presented. And just to speak to this, this is the air-supported recreation facility designed as a 135,000-square-foot facility featuring turf interior that is designed to serve as a multi-purpose, multi-sport recreation center that will be on the north end. An RFP has been issued for the design and construction of the recreation facility up in Trader Ridge, based on past RFEI results. Administration's expecting the project costs will exceed $10 million. However, there will be other funding sources recommended to council once the RFP is closed and we have more accurate costing available.
Okay, thanks for that, Council Burke. Please vote on that. And that carries, and we'll just come back to you for your meeting highlights, please.
All right, just, let me pull it up. All right, so taxation and assessment work continues with taxpayers for the upcoming tax sale. Administration is out in the downtown area picking up changes for the VIA tax. Financial management, external auditors are on-site to complete the 2024 year-end audit work. And spring is just around the corner, so procurement and supply chain management, current open bids include supply and delivery of topsoil, engineering design for a climbing wall at the Activity Reception Centre, waste and recycling services, road rehab, Phase 3, arcade slab remediation, asphalt mix supply, tree supply and planting services, and then as just we discussed, the air-supported rec facility. And in geographical and information technology services, point-to-point network connections are being installed at various city facilities for operational business requirements. And that's my report.
Okay, thanks for that, Council Burke. We'll move on to our Operational Services Committee, and I'll look to Council O'Connor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Pallott. I'd like to move that council adopt the minutes of the Operational Services Committee meeting held March 4th as presented.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. And that carries. And you had an item of business as well councillor O'Connor.
Yes, thank you Deputy Mayor Palat. I'd like to move council reduce the trigger for residential snow removal to 10 centimeters. And this came up at council committee meeting that need to address some of the issues that we've experienced of what the trigger is. And I think it's important that we look at this and we should be looking at bringing back more discussion at a later council committee at the hall.
Thanks for the motion councillor O'Connor. I just want to confirm with admin, so this is just to reduce it to 10 centimeters? This isn't changing the policy though? This is just, this is again, that's through the season, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, thanks Chair Palat. So what this would do is it would bring the trigger from 13 centimeters currently to 10 centimeters. Right now, we have budgeted based on the 13 centimeters. So at 13 centimeters, we're anticipating three rounds of snow removal for residential during the calendar year. 10 centimeters would be four. So as of this year, depending on how much snow, we would just be running a deficit at the end of the year if we had to do more than three.
Okay, thanks for that. Mayor Clayton.
Question for Chief Lavin as well. Tell me what your expectation was in regards to bringing back a snow removal evaluation and conversation at the end of, let's call it the snow season. But at some point, I would assume May or, so tell me when you were planning to bring it back and how how you see that unfolding. Is it administrations coming back with recommendations? Is it going to be a workshop for council based on what they heard in the community? Tell me how you see that conversation unfolding and when we expect that conversation to happen.
Yeah, thanks Mayor Clayton. Right now, we would likely be bringing it back sometime in May, assuming snow is wrapped up by then. What we'll look at is we'll reflect any of the changes that have occurred since the last review. So there'll be a little bit of housekeeping that we'll bring forward. And we'll also assess any of the concerns that we've heard over the course of the winter here. So we can bring back some of those housekeeping amendments, ensure that we are reflecting current direction for policy. And then we can work with council on any other amendments that council may want to see.
Thank you for that. So just to confirm that, that conversation will come back to a council committee at the hall? Or will it come back to a operational committee?
Thanks Chair Palat. We can bring it back to council committee of the hall if that's the desire.
Looking around, I think for me, the preference would be that. I think it's one of those pretty high-level conversations that it's, as some folks aren't on that operational committee, it'd be nice if it was council committee of the hall. But I don't know if we need to prescribe a motion. I've seen lots of head nods here, so I think admin can, can see that. So, so no more discussion or debate on there? Or Mayor Clayton, did you have another question on that?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I just, I'm unclear. I seem to have missed this earlier. Is this motion being brought forward from councillor O'Connor as a preference? In his opinion, or did administration bring this recommendation forward?
So this was brought forward from the Operational Services Committee last week.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Blackmore.
Thank you councillor Plott. I, kind of a heads up, I guess, to administration is I have talked about the fact that we seem to have in, I don't know how many years I've lived in Grand Prairie, a spring melt somewhere around February every year, which always creates problems with transportation and our roads. Both with impassable frozen ruts in residential areas and numerous potholes. So I would like us to figure out if there's some kind of policy trigger that we could build into our snow removal budget or into our snow removal policy that would deal with this, I don't want to call it surprise, but we always act surprised when the spring melt comes and, and yes, sorry, it's not even a spring melt, mid-winter melt. I don't need any response now, but when this does come back in May with the report, I will be asking questions then and I would like to see something for then.
Thanks for that councillor Blackmore. Councillor O'Connor, did you want to close on this? Oh, sorry Mayor Clayton, go ahead.
Thanks. I will support the motion. I think it's a, we've tried and looked at how it was at 13 centimeters. I don't think that it ended up being enough. But I look forward to the larger conversation because I think not just about the amount of snow falling. It's really, as councillor Blackmore mentioned, it's the freeze and thaw. It's the melting of windrows onto sidewalks and residents can't keep up. It's the, it's the spilling of other precipitation onto roads and freezing. It's the rutting. It's many things. And so I actually don't know if doing one more round would have mitigated some of the issues that we saw this year because there was so many freeze and thaws. But there are substantial issues. And so I look forward to having a grander conversation on all of the snow removal in May approximately. But for today, I'm happy to support this motion. Thank you.
Thanks Mayor Clayton. Councillor O'Connor.
Yes, thank you Mayor Clayton for, and councillor Blackmore for reiterating the concerns that people have expressed to us. So I'm looking forward to the larger conversation later on after the season is over. And I will, is over and I will also be asking some questions. Albeit that we need to try and keep our budget in line, but I think it's well worth it. So please support this motion.
Thanks councillor O'Connor. Please vote.
Press key in favor.
And that carries. I'll just come back to councillor O'Connor with your meeting highlights, please.
Yes, thank you very much. Just have to open up the meeting again. Thank you. Under engineering and transportation services, crews are currently working 24 hours on potholes. I think we'll see that changing as the next freeze thaw. We're expecting 20 centimeters of snow on Wednesday, which, oh. So water trucks and hydroback crews are responding to flooding issues and open drains. I won't mention that one. Request for tenders for road rehabilitation phase two and request for proposal for mission estates storm rehabilitation. And corporate facility management have now been posted request for tenders for exterior door replacement at the Bonnet's Energy Centre. And this has been allowed for in our budget. And request for tenders for the parkside slab remediation. Administration provided tours of the East Link and Design Works Centre to local area high school students. And under environment and parks, RFQ for tree supply and installation has now been posted. RFQ for aerial mosquito control contract is now closed. And due to warmer weather and unsafe conditions, administration has closed all outdoor hockey rinks. And that's my report. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that councillor O'Connor. So we head into our correspondence and our first item is we just recently had an AGM from our Downtown Association. I would just look for somebody to make a motion. Councillor Blackmore.
Thank you councillor Plott. I would move that council appoint Diane Lauren to the Grand Prairie Downtown Association Board for a term ending March 1st, 2026. And also that we appoint Catherine Ridgway, Kendra Davis and Marius Hodas to the Grand Prairie Downtown Association Board for terms ending March 1st, 2028. And in speaking to that, the Downtown Association did recently have their annual general meeting. And as a result of elections there, these motions need to be, the appointments need to be formally approved by the city of Grand Prairie due to the policy that governs the Downtown Association. So I'd ask you to support these names coming forward.
Thanks for your motion councillor Blackmore. And I appreciate all these folks who are letting their names stand on the work they do do for Downtown Association. So seeing nobody in the queue, please vote. And that, and that carries. So for our next item, we'll go to correspondence and we have something for AquaTerra Utilities and I'll look to our Financial Administrative Services for an opening, please.
Thank you. Annual discretionary dividends require unanimous consent of the original shareholders. So we just need a motion to support the 2024 discretionary dividends for AquaTerra.
Okay, thank you for that intro. Councillor Berg.
Yeah, just business, no, no questions. I would like to direct the mayor to sign unanimous consent for discretionary dividends as requested by AquaTerra Utilities Inc. on behalf of the city of Grand Prairie.
Thanks for the motion. Discussion debate. Seeing nobody in the queue, please vote. And that carries. So we have no delegation of business or motions, so we will recess now and we'll re-adjourn here at 6 o'clock. Thank you. We're good to go? I'll just count this in. We're good? We're going in three, two, one. Welcome back everybody to our evening session for city council tonight. We'll start with our delegations. If there's a Brent Zimmerman here, if you'd like to come forward and get on up to the chairs and there's microphones there, if you want to just pull them towards yourself and settle in. So Mr. Zimmerman, thanks for filling out the information and
Okay.
Got five minutes to just kind of, well, five minutes to kind of tell us what's, what's, what your concern is and we'll probably have some questions for you afterwards.
I guess I'll start out by introducing myself. My name's Brent Zimmerman. Lived in Grand Prairie all my life. Earned my first, or I guess bought my first home in 82 and I've been paying city taxes ever since. I, I guess up till about four years ago, took advantage of the incentive to pay your taxes early. And in return, got a percentage paid back in, in monies, I guess, for early payment. This was something that I could budget for and basically being on a disability pension, it was something that I looked forward to. And I've talked with actually quite a few other people and explained to them about what we used to receive. And they were really interested. They did not get to see any advertisement whatsoever for this incentive. I understand that maybe the usefulness, they live, their, their payments from check to check. As a senior, my budget is on a yearly basis. And taking advantage of this percentage return on my taxes was something I looked forward to. I had got a hold of Jackie and we discussed this and she ended up saying that we could maybe talk with Amanda and get Amanda to, you know, set this up for me to, you know, come and see you guys. And again, the people I've talked with really think this would be a great idea, but we don't have any knowledge per se because it was never advertised, this incentive could be there. The Tax Revenue Agency could probably take advantage of the monies and the interest occurred. In turn, the taxpayer benefiting from this rate of return as well. So I just brought this for you guys to see what you think. And, you know, there's a few gray-haired people I can see. I'm not the only one out there. So maybe we could all take advantage of this for early payment. I guess that's about it. That's what I was here to bring forward to you people. And I'm hoping that you guys can at least look at this as something that could maybe be implemented again to, to the tax basis, so.
Okay, no, thanks for bringing it forward, Mr. Zimmerman. I've got a few people in queues. We'll just, we'll have some questions for you from our council. So councillor Blackmore.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Plott. Mr. Zimmerman, I don't know this because they pay my taxes monthly, but are you saying that four years ago, the, if you paid your taxes early, you no longer got? Okay, so you no longer get that
No.
option. Okay. I did not know that. I knew that there certainly was the ability to early pay previously. So I always thought that was a good deal.
Me too.
So yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Councillor Blackmore.
Yes, thank you much through the chair Deputy Mayor Plott. Just curious, do you remember what the percentage was that you would get?
It, the rate of return, I don't think was a fixed amount, but the, I think it was 2018 or 19 was the last time I got it and I was at 2%. So it, it actually, the increase in taxes, it worked out that, you know, it was almost like a flat tax. Right? So you, you could, you could budget your way around of just paying the normal amount of tax because the, the rate of return that you had was, you know, it subsided with the, the increase in the tax revenue basis down, so.
That sounds like a great concept and we'll have questions for administration later to see if that's a possibility going forward. But thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
But councillor Thieson.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor Plott and thank you very much Mr. Zimmerman for coming in. Don't have a question for you actually. Both of my questions were asked, but I do have a question for administration that the chair will allow.
Are you okay with doing that a delegation business? And we will, we will definitely be coming back to this later on the, on the agenda, but.
Well, just to give, just to give administration a heads up. When I was around in 2018 and based off of my recollection, I think council decided at that time, because it wasn't very well subscribed, that we were going to forego it. I guess just putting it in administration's ear, my question later during delegation business will be around that program and if we still have any details about how it was administered. And at least council knows what we're, we're looking at going forward and what Mr. Zimmerman exactly is asking for.
That's fair. Okay.
Chris, back at you. That's, I guess, my biggest issue and the people I talked with as well is nobody's really thought, you know, word of mouth about this incentive. So this would be something that I guess would be, you know, a trial basis. I'm just stating like, I don't know if one, two, three year trial basis and see what the response from the constituents are, so.
Councillor Bressi.
Thank you Chair Plott. Not super relevant this, but anytime somebody uses the phrase gray hair and property tax difficulty, I also do want to make sure they're aware that the province runs a seniors property tax deferral program. Are you aware of that program?
Um, no, no, that, that I'm not aware of and
So there is?
There's, there's a lot. I've talked with Chris Workington and seen all the different possibilities and, you know, ins and outs through the channels and up and downs. So again, I'm, I'm still not out in the streets or anything, so that's a great thing. But I'd like to be able to, be able to have everything budgeted and, you know, anything that's a possibility, a rate of return as we all know, or most of us, but it's, it's a good thing, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Councillor Blackmore.
Just a couple of things. I know that if you get your taxes done by seniors out Yeah, just a couple of things. I know that if you get your taxes done by seniors outreach, they always know what is available out there for people. So they would have information on the provincial seniors incentive tax. I can't remember the name of it, but something like that, right? Um, and as far as how much the incentive was originally, or at one time it was, um, the interest difference between when you paid your taxes early to the day the taxes were due, which would be, uh, July first, June thirtieth. So probably roughly most years around two percent.
Yeah, I usually, I, I, I shot for, you know, the start of December and budgeted to, to have the tax paid for then. So that's when I seem to get the incentive, so.
Uh, Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming here to express your concerns.
Thank you for having me.
Most welcome. Um, so you were in this program. Do you men, remember how many years that you were in, engaged in this program?
Like I said, eighteen, nineteen is when the program was taken out. Um, I believe when I talked with Jackie, uh, she had, um, a person from administration, from the tax revenue department. And he stated that, uh, I, I believe it was nineteen that it was taken out. And reason for was it was just not well used. Again, you let the people know and they will come, so.
So you're paying one lump sum every year?
Yeah, I, I still do and I've been hoping that I, every year that I could get the revenue back and, and I, I waited, I, up to this time and thought maybe it was time to bring and address my issues.
Okay, um, like I'm with Gladys there, Counselor Blackmore. Uh, I, I do mine monthly and I have for many years and it seems to work out. But, uh, yeah, I do remember that program. And, uh, I do remember that it was taken out because nobody subscribed. And we do put tax notices in the water bills sometimes and stuff like that, so.
The gentleman that I talked with, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
He stated that nothing was ever, uh, uh, brought forward to or no advertisements in, about the incentive program. So that's what I was, when I had the meeting with Jackie and him, they said that nothing had been issued and, again, um, you know, if it was, it was set out with your water bill or with, you know, your tax bill or whatever, maybe people were, you know, because the people I've been talking with said, yes, I've never heard about it, but I would take advantage of it.
Perfect. We'll see what happens when we talk to admin. Thanks very much.
Okay, well, that clears my queue of questions from council, but I'm sure when we get to the delegation portion, we're going to have more questions for administration, so you're welcome to stick around for that or our administration will follow up with you if you, if you choose not to stick around as well.
Okay, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much for having me.
For coming in. Appreciate it. Yes, well, moving on to our next MR agenda is our public hearing, so sixteen point one, we'll go to our land use amendments and I'll just look to administration to introduce, please.
Thank you. The city has received an application to amend the land use bylaw. The subject property is located in Signature Falls neighborhood surrounded by low density residential and some undeveloped lands. In the land use bylaw, the subject land is zoned as urban reserve. The purpose of the urban reserve is to protect land from premature subdivision and development. It is typically for areas that are expected to transition into urban development in the near future. The proposed amendment will rezone the land to small lot residential district and combined, combined residential district, which is compatible with the surrounding residential uses as shown on the slide. The lands are identified future small lot residential and future combined residential in the Signature Falls outline plan. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the outline plan which was adopted in two thousand six. The proposal was reviewed by relevant departments and notices were mailed to the adjacent property owners within sixty meter radius of the subject property and no comments were received. Administration concludes that the proposed amendments are consistent with the southeast area structure plan, Signature Falls outline plan, and are also consistent with the adjacent land uses in the neighborhood. Based on this background, administration recommends that council give bylaw C one two six zero one nine six three readings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Patel, and we'll go to questions on that. I did mention I forgot to call out the order, but so I appreciate you bringing the report and I'll go to Counselor Burke.
Yeah, thanks Deputy Mayor Plott. Um, so Ms. Patel, can you explain to me, uh, what urban reserve is? So just to reassure that we're not turning what was designated parkland into, um, housing.
Thank you through the chair. Urban reserve is an unfortunate land use name because it can be misrepresented as being a reserve area, but actually what urban reserve is a holding district to protect the land from premature development when it is expected to become urban development. So our, our park space designation in the land use bylaw is called public, um, service. And that would be a district that we use for park space. Urban reserve is for protecting land from, for urban development.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Donning. I appreciate it.
Uh, Counselor Thieson, please.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Plott. I'm just prepared to do business if there are no other questions.
Uh, we still have to go through the process on it, so we'll, we'll come back for that. Uh, Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you. Could some mayor remind me where exactly the cricket field we're working on is going to be placed?
Possible to maybe put the map back up and have another side that shows the school site on it potentially?
Chair Plott, um, in the report under the analysis section, immediately to the north of the red line, red outline is where the cricket pitch, uh, would go.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for administration? None, um, let's go to our presentation and submissions and I'll look for anybody that's here to speak in support of the application. If you are, please come forward and introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm, uh, Michael Frederickson. I'm with Helix Engineering. Uh, we're the applicant. Looking after this, this rezoning. Um, so I haven't really prepared anything. Um, this rezoning, uh, it's exactly what was presented in the outline plan and the area structure plan. So, um, feels like this is more of an administrative type of process. Make sure our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed. So, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions and if you're in support of the app.
Okay, thanks for that, Mr. Frederickson. Any questions for Mr. Frederickson? Seeing none, I guess you got off pretty easy tonight, but thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Um, so I'll ask again if there's anybody here to speak in support of this application. I'll ask for a third time, is there anybody to speak in support of this application? Seeing none, I will ask if there's anybody here opposed to speak about this application. Uh, I'll ask again, is anybody here to speak, oppose this application? For a third and final time, uh, seeing nobody online and in chambers, we'll ask if there's anybody opposed. And with nobody there, I'll close the public hearing and we'll look for business arising and I'll go back to Counselor Thieson, please.
Look at that, Deputy Mayor Plott. I put my Mike O'Connor in and I got to make the motion. I move that, uh, council, uh, give first reading to bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash one ninety-six, uh, amendment to the land use bylaw.
What's with the motion? In favor? Counselor Plott in favor? See in favor?
Mayor Clayton in favor?
That carries. Counselor Thieson, may I continue?
Well, thank you Deputy Mayor Plott. I'd move that council gives second reading to bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash one ninety-six, an amendment to the land use bylaw. Just speaking to this motion, uh, as the proponent said, it's, uh, pretty much a clerical change. Uh, it was, uh, originally a certain way, got moved into the urban reserves and now it's right in line with the rest of the neighborhood. Uh, I appreciate that Counselor Bressi pointed out that the cricket pitch is going, uh, directly to the north of it, uh, which is, uh, something that we should be mindful of, uh, knowing that we're building that and, uh, want to ensure that, uh, we're not, uh, having any cricket balls fly out of the pitch and into somebody's yard within the neighborhood. So, uh, thanks for bringing that up, but I see no issues with it and I encourage council to support this.
Thanks for the motion, Counselor Thieson. Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and just to be really clear, I didn't raise that because I've got concerns. I raised that because I'm really excited that we're building housing, that it looks like housing might go in right beside a pretty significant and exciting amenity we're building.
So common, Counselor Bressi. Um, please vote on the second reading. That carries and we'll come back to Counselor Thieson again.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Plott. I'd move that council have third reading at this meeting.
Anybody in the queue, please vote. And that carries as well, and so want to find others that finish it off, please Counselor Thieson.
Fine as well, hey, I, I would move that council gets third reading to bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash one ninety-six, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks for the motion. And that carries. That'll close that file. Um, so we'll go back to the next MR agenda, delegation business and we'll go have discussion and I'll look for direction from council. Counselor O'Connor.
Yes, I was just wondering, had a couple of questions for administration. Would there be any, uh, financial burden or something that would hold, uh, uh, city administration for not enabling people to pay their taxes ahead of time?
Thanks for the question, Counselor Connor. I'll go to CEO Burke, please.
Uh, uh, thanks Deputy Mayor Plott. Um, cause I was not familiar with this program until this delegation request, uh, came in. I did ask for some background information, so this, uh, could come in a report or if, uh, uh, council would, uh, humor me, I can share some of the information that I know about the, the previous program. Um, at a time of being wrapped up. Um, so it was wrapped up in twenty nineteen. Uh, at the time, there was about ten people that had subscribed to it. This would be the first time that someone's raised, uh, reintroducing that program. Uh, in twenty nineteen, if you paid, uh, your full tax bill in January, you received a one percent, um, uh, credit, uh, back. Um, if you paid in February, it was point seven five and in March, it was point five of percent of your tax bill. When this, uh, municipalities created this program at, at a time when they were looking to generate some, uh, early year revenue, that was the, the incentive. Uh, with, uh, the introduction of the TIPS program as well as the, um, uh, just are, are better able to manage some of the, the, the funding that we have. Um, it deemed obsolete. Uh, to our knowledge, Leftbridge is the only municipality that still is operating a, a similar program. Uh, talking about, uh, so it is possible to do. If council wanted us to, uh, directs us to bring a report back, we would include this information, the steps outlined. Regarding the administrative burden, um, it does require three transactions. So there's the initial transaction at the front end when they pay. There's a calculation at some point, um, uh, based on, based on the, um, the, the amount that we have to credit. Um, the tax rate though then isn't set until later in the year, so there's a third transaction, either it's the kind of plus or minus, we either owe them a little bit of money or they owe us a little bit of money. So while not, um, not an onerous burden, um, there is a burden and an increasing transactions for a program that doesn't really benefit, uh, the city or, benefit we don't, we no longer need because of other programs that have taken place or been introduced, uh, that have taken its place. And I think that is all the information I have today.
Okay, uh, uh, thank you very much. Um, you know, it's interesting to have somebody come and give you money early and I, I'm assuming that we don't have a cash flow issue which you just addressed, so it's just one of those nice, do I remember the program, never did take advantage of it. I just went to monthly payments, so I'm just curious what other people are thinking on council.
Thanks for that, Counselor Burke.
Yeah, thank you Deputy Mayor Plott. So, yeah, similarly, a lot of the questions were answered. I was kind of hoping that it, it would be an upfront, nice cash advance for us that, uh, would, would kick off our cash reserves early. But, uh, doesn't seem, again, I'm only going to guess based on you said ten subscribers, somewhere between thirty and fifty thousand dollars, which hardly moves the needle. Um, but it would be nice if somebody was saving theoretically one or a half percent, but, uh, again, maybe they can get that in a savings account too. Uh, so I guess the only question left that I had is would be around school taxes. Uh, I don't see the city having the capacity to give, uh, anybody a discount on the school taxes as that's provincial and, and that would have to come out of, any discount would come out of the city, so. Uh, it would only be a portion of your property tax bill that would be eligible, so maybe two thirds of it. Um, so, uh, I love it in theory, but in practice, maybe it's just not what we, uh, it's just not worth it for anybody.
Thanks for that, Counselor Burke. Counselor Thieson.
Yeah, thank you very much Deputy Mayor Plott. Uh, just a question for the CEO. Uh, in regards to this old program, was that just specific for senior citizens?
Uh, uh, thank you Deputy Mayor Plott. Uh, no, it was open to all, uh, to all taxpayers. Um, it was indicated to me that it traditionally had been, uh, uh, seniors who'd been in the program a long time and had taken advantage of that. Um, another factor, uh, I understood that was considered in twenty nineteen was that uh, you, at the time, you were receiving more interest in your bank account than you were with, uh, with the city's program with, uh, one percent if you took full advantage. So it actually was a disadvantage to, to many residents to, to enter the program at the time.
Okay, cause maybe I'm remembering something different. Um, I remember a time on my first two terms and we did have a discussion about it, about, uh, seniors, uh, homeowner property tax rebate. And, uh, my memory, if it, if it serves me well, I was about a hundred to a two hundred dollar discount on the property tax for a senior after a certain age, uh, which is what I was, uh, referring to, not the one percent or the tips. So just a question, is that program still available through the city of Grand Prairie of homeownership for seniors tax, property tax rebate, one to two hundred dollars?
Not sure if administration wants to take that one.
Uh, we do still have a seniors, uh, rebate program. I don't know off the top of my head what the actual dollar values are per senior.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. Um, maybe, maybe that warrants a little investigation, uh, cause what I heard our delegation, Mr. Zimmerman stating is that, you know, senior citizens who are bit hard, bit hard oppressed for getting a monthly income and have to live on, uh, more nuanced living, uh, let's say, could really benefit through a program like this, even if it's just a hundred or two hundred dollars. So I, I don't know, I'm putting this on table. I'm not making a motion yet. I saw Counselor Burke, uh, click in, so I'm looking forward to to hearing whatever discussion may transpire from this, but, uh, um, like, like I said, maybe it's no new thing. Maybe it's just a report that comes to committee informing council of what the options are for people like Mr. Zimmerman.
Thanks Counselor Thieson. Counselor Blackmore.
Um, I, I do believe the seniors tax rebate is a hundred dollars a year for household. CEO Burke mentioned that there was a very small number of citizens who took advantage of this program, as perhaps ten people. However, to those ten people, it was an important program. So I'm, I'm wondering if, uh, it's possible that we could do, uh, make the management of it smoother so that we only paid out whatever we needed to pay out after everything was set and everything was in place. Like, I don't think you need to pay it out before the, um, end of July. Um, however, um, I think it's worth having a discussion at the finance services committee meeting or something. I think we need more information about the program.
You looking to make a motion or?
Can I just simply refer to the finance services committee?
Not sure if that gives enough direction to admin, but I'll ask CEO Burke.
Well, that's, thanks Deputy Mayor Plott. I, I guess the question is whether it was for discussion or there was some additional information that, uh, council would like, uh, at that meeting. Could be just some clarification.
Well, I think we need more information about the program itself and maybe include the seniors tax rebate program in that. And, uh, just to rep, to, uh, provide it for more information. the seniors tax rebate program in that and just to provide it for more information. I don't think at this point, I'm not looking for someone to go away and write a long report and bring it back, I just think we need the ins and outs of how the program ran, and then if the financial services committee feels it's worthy to bring back to council, they will do so.
Okay, well, there's a few people in queue, and so if we want to think about a formalized motion, I can come back to you if you want and go through the queue. Mayor Clayton.
Just making sure I'm unneeded, thanks Deputy Mayor Plott, question for administration and maybe Mr Burke knows, maybe not, I don't know who was around when it first was initiated, the program I mean, and so I'm curious, was there a lot of conversation around it at the time it was implemented, from administration's perspective, was there people that called and then said, huh, one percent maybe is not worth it, I can make more money in the bank? Was there people, did we promote it well? As our delegation mentioned when I met with him personally, as well as tonight, people he spoke to felt that they hadn't heard of it before, so I don't know if there's anyone that can provide some context regards to when the program was rolled out, was it well promoted, was it just something that we talked to when people came to pay their taxes? I just need some, for a fair evaluation, if people really thought this was a great opportunity, it'd be good to know what sort of impact and weight was put on it in regards to promoting it, people calling and asking questions, if we have any of that context, I think it would be valuable, thanks.
Okay, thanks for that, CEO Burke.
Thanks Deputy Mayor Plott, I would say if there was a motion to bring this for discussion at committee, that we would bring our chief assessor to come, he would have the greatest depth or breadth of context. I would say that I would have assumed council would have had a lot of this discussion when they wrapped this up in 2019, but I was not here either for that, but having Mr Smith come and talk with committee would probably be the most efficient use of time.
Okay, thank you for that context, councillor Burke.
Yeah, thank you Deputy Mayor, so when the delegation was in, councillor Bressie had mentioned a provincial program, if councillor Bressie would indulge me and the chair would indulge me, can you elaborate on that program a little bit or what you do know? Again, part of it too is, are we creating redundancy for something that already exists or could potentially create redundancy?
Councillor Bressie, you're next up in the queue as well.
Great, yeah, so we have a link to it on our own city website, but really, that's just links to provincial program, but I understand how it works, the seniors who are at home and they own at least twenty-five percent of their equity, they can take out a low interest three percent loan from the province for ten years, or up to ten years, sorry, for, to cover their minimum property taxes, and that becomes payable when they sell their property, so it's a way for seniors to not not pay property taxes, but defer it until they're getting other properties so they can afford to stay in their home and pay on the back end instead of pay as they go. And again, not an expert, just reading what I read on the provincial website, but it is a great program that I wish more people knew about.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Bressie, you are next in queue as well.
First, make a motion when you want to do business.
You're welcome to make a motion unless councillor Blackmore was, okay.
Well, I'm gonna have a very different motion than she was, and I hate to be this guy, but I'm gonna make a motion just that we received the delegation for information, which is kind of the polite way that we often say we're gonna take no action on something, and just speak that, I really appreciate Mr Zimmerman coming in here and sharing, and sharing that he thought this was a valuable program for him, and as councillor Blackmore said, I really appreciate that this was a valuable program for the people that used it, I don't want to downplay that in any way, but I'm not convinced that it would become heavily subscribed even if we did roll it out and we had a good PR campaign, one percent interest, right now you can get a lot better than that just putting it in a savings account. And more importantly for me, the city doesn't need it for cash flow purposes, and I really struggle to say, hey, residents who are comfortable enough, and I appreciate that nobody's as comfortable as they want to be, and I appreciate there are some people who could participate in this program that maybe you have challenges, but still, if you're comfortable enough to be able to pay all your property taxes at the beginning of the year, that is, there are people in this community who that's not an opportunity to them, and I don't think it's fair to ask the later type of people to pay a little bit more so that the first type could pay a little bit less, and so it's not fulfilling a city need, I don't think it's fulfilling a huge need for our residents, and I don't really see it as fair, and so for me personally, I'm not interested in asking administration to do more work, asking committee to go work on this, I've, that's where I'm at, so I hope the committee will, or sorry, the council will support this motion to receive for information, but again, I hate to be that guy, Mr Zimmerman, if you're watching, but I really do appreciate you coming in and sharing your thoughts, even if I can't support what you want us to do.
Okay, thanks councillor Bressie for motion, councillor Blackmore.
I'm wondering, I'll ask this question of administration, I'm wondering if we could just get a quick email from Mr Smith with some details of the background of the program? I'm guessing that it is, I know for sure it predates 2001, and the seniors tax rebate of a hundred dollars came into effect somewhere around 2001, but I'm just, I don't want administration to do a lot of work, but I'm curious to know that information myself, so I'm just wondering if that would work for administration.
Thanks councillor Burke.
Happy to share as information, if there were just some specifics, if that's the only new piece that I've heard requested was the establishment of the program.
And how it rolled out and worked, the mechanics of it, I guess.
Okay, that's information that I can share by email with council.
Other than that, I suspect that councillor Bressie is correct, that there's really no point in trying to rejuvenate a program that was not, was no longer being really well received by the public anyway. In other words, I'll support your motion.
Thanks for that councillor Blackmore, councillor Thieson, please.
Yeah, thank you very much Deputy Mayor Plott, unfortunately, I gotta be that guy and I can't support your motion councillor Bressie, I guess for me, what I need is information, like, we know that the last program wasn't subscribed well and that we ended up scrapping it, but perhaps that's a function of how it was laid out and designed, where it wasn't really an incentive for anybody to come forward and pay their taxes. I've been hearing a couple of things, one about the seniors, and I'd love to get that rebate, see how many people maybe subscribe to that program currently. The other thing is, is we also want to encourage early payment of property taxes rather than have people wait until the very, very end and then be delinquent on it, and I know we make revenue off of interest payments and stuff like that, but that never makes the city council or administration the good guys in this place, so for all those things, for me, I just need the info, there's an opportunity for us to maybe improve a lot of life for property owners here, seniors or otherwise, and get our property tax paid upfront prior to when we have to start sending those letters that say, you're two weeks late, you're a month late, you're a year late, so for all those reasons, I'm gonna just hold firm in this end and I'm gonna vote no on this one, thanks.
Thanks for that councillor Thieson, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks, I'm gonna echo councillor Thieson's comments, I think councillor Bressie is probably bang on, I think that this program probably doesn't serve many people, but from what I heard, it wouldn't take a lot for a report to come back at that time, I more than likely won't support reinstating this program, however, I just think having this information for committee and or council to discuss is valuable. I, you know, I hear councillor Bressie and councillor Blackmore's comments in regards to that it probably doesn't make sense, it doesn't serve a lot of people, however, I don't think it's a lot of work for administration to come back with what the program is doing, where the opportunities are. End of the day, it's exploring an opportunity for residents as they saw it an opportunity, however, more than likely, when council chose to posit, it was the right decision, but I just want to have this conversation and look forward to the information, therefore I won't be able to support your motion.
Thanks for that Mayor Clayton, there's nobody in the queue, I'll just enter in, I will support the motion because I do think that's probably the direction we're gonna go, having said that, if we do get information from, when we do get our information from administration, if we're not happy, I think it's incumbent on one of us to make a motion at a subsequent meeting saying, we'd like to look at this further. I guess for me, I think if administration can provide that information, that's probably the information I'll need to make, that I feel comfortable with it, but if there's more information that we still need, I would suggest that my peers would ask for more then and bring it to a subsequent financial administration committee or council committee as a whole to take it further at that point if that's something they wanted, or after this motion, they could choose to make a motion as well tonight, but seeing nobody else in the queue, I'll come back to councillor Bressie to close.
Great, thank you, yeah, again, I really do appreciate when residents come speak to us, but for me personally, I just can't see this being something that I support even with a little bit more information, we had a lot of information today, and I just don't see the need for it, again, the city doesn't need for cash flow, and at the former interest rates, he could do better sticking it in a savings account. I'd highlight that we've got only about a hundred and ten hours of working time together before this council term is over, a hundred and ten hours seems like a lot, but it really isn't, especially we've got some big files that we're trying to move forward, and we've also put a lot onto our administration, asked them to do some big, some big things too, so I think if there's, if this is something that you're not interested in actually pursuing, then please don't, don't make us do, don't make us do this work, if it's something that you genuinely think, mission might come back and say, hey, I'm gonna push this forward, and I'm gonna use some of our hundred and ten hours that we have left to make this happen, then awesome, by all means, please vote no to this motion and try to make it happen, but if you don't think you're gonna move on this, please vote yes to this motion.
Thank you for that, close, please vote. And that carries, seeing nobody in the queue for additional motions, we'll start our round table, and I'll go to Mayor Clayton, we're gonna go the opposite direction, and I'll go with Mayor Clayton to start with, please.
Sorry, you'll have to give me a minute.
Okay, well, how about we go with councillor O'Connor then?
Well, thank you very much, it's been an interesting last couple of weeks, so as I brought greetings to the downtown association AGM as deputy mayor, spent an evening with most of council, all of council, at an evening with Grand Prairie, and that was a wonderful event in Edmonton, went to the unveiling of a new vehicle for technical and search and rescue, and that was done at the Prairie Mall, and then went to the Bear Creek lineup reveal, I can't even read my own writing, anyway, attended the ten year anniversary of Pregnancy Care Centre, and I really enjoyed with councillor Thieson doing the spotting, they figured that we both raised the amount that they've made on the auction, so kudos, and also breaking, went to breaking bread with IPTAR, and had attended AB Munis this week in Edmonton, and it was great to meet with a couple of ministers there, and it was a great meeting overall, thank you.
Thanks for that councillor O'Connor, councillor Burke.
Yeah, thank you Deputy Mayor, I really enjoyed the Bear Creek Folk Festival lineup unveiling, looking forward to going once again this year, evening with GP, that was again another terrific event, got to see a few ministers, and just make some great connections, have some advancing conversations. Alberta Munis was always great, that with the mayor of Bonneville, was hoping to make a hockey bet, and then I checked the standings, and Bonneville's got a tough fight to make the playoffs, so tried not to be arrogant that our Storm are in the playoffs, but good luck Bonneville, I'd like to see the two teams play. And then the other big event that I absolutely enjoyed was Black History Month, the entertainment was top notch, and one of the highlights, there was actually two highlights, as I can almost see Mayor Clayton wincing, but there was a saxophone version of Oh Canada with Afro beats in the background, and I absolutely loved that. So great entertainment all around, but again, the other highlight was watching Mayor Clayton be a model, so they had a fashion show, and Mayor Clayton was one of the wonderful models participating in it, and great job by Mayor Clayton and everybody that entertained that evening, it was a wonderful event, and that's my report.
Thanks for that councillor Burke, councillor O'Connor.
Thank you very much, I attended with Invest GP, Apex Security, over thirty years in business in Grand Prairie, they've expanded, they're in every corner of the province, and I think they said over three hundred employees, so that's hats off for businesses started here and expanded so greatly. I also attended the Women of Influence Awards, I'm just kinda writing this down in detail, I went to the Storm game, that was a five-one victory for us, and I got to sit beside Max Ledoux, he's number fourteen for the Storm, he was like a commentator to me, and it was a great, great experience, and I also, and beside him was Kayden Clark, number twenty-eight, and they did a really good job of being comfortable and engaging in conversation with me. I went to the second Storm game, and we won that one as well, also attended the Big Brothers' Big Sisters Ultimate Escape, it was a near sellout, if not, it may have been a sellout. Did the technical search and rescue, the new vehicle unveiling, as mentioned earlier, and I also attended the Bear Creek Folk Festival lineup, and I brought my grandson to that, and he thought that was a great event. Also, yeah, that's, that's my round table for the evening.
Okay.
I was ready to go for a roll, but I ran out of stuff I wrote down, so there you go.
Thanks for that councillor O'Connor, councillor Thieson.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor Plott, yeah, busy couple of weeks here, lots of conferences, lots of travel, first thing I'll start out with is water management in the Alberta boreal conference, it was a biannual event, so every other year it happens, this is a great collection of people, we had over almost a hundred and fifty people in attendance for that.
Learning everything about how to preserve wetlands, how to understand some of the scientific studies that they're rolling through, obviously I didn't, because I can barely describe it, but one of the coolest things that I found there was, was the presentation on the water courses and how we do proper bridge construction, culvert maintenance and stuff like that. And to that end, the province of Alberta, working with AWC Three Partners, ended up creating these cool water course guidebooks that are hot off the press actually, just brand new, twenty twenty-four, and I thought it would be a good idea to grab not one but two presents for our operational services chief, Mr Glavine, to hand out to either Mr Nellis or maybe Mr De Vries, when we start talking about building roads over top of our Bear Creek, as we discussed last week in changing our transportation master plan to address one hundred and sixteenth and one hundred and thirty-second. So with that, Chief Glavine, this is for your team, you can also find copies online as well, these are the printed copies, so I had to charm my way into an extra copy there because we only had seventy-five available at the conference, but a very worthwhile conference, I encourage every member of council in the community, the next time this happens in two years, stay tuned to it because there is lots of great information, some of it'll go over your head like it did over mine, but when we're talking about building cities and the right way to do things and how important water is to all life, this is the type of conference that you want to go to, especially living in Alberta's boreal. From there, I also attended some other events that council has discussed, the Women of Influence Award, just a big congratulations to all of our great women in this community, the ones who were nominated, the ones who won, and the ones who have yet to be nominated, because I think we should celebrate our women every day because they are strong influences in all of our lives, and I say that as assumed to be that again. I also attended the Pregnancy Care Center Ten Year Gala with councillor O'Connor, we helped with the spotting, as councillor O'Connor stated, with all of Grand Prairie, we went to an evening with Grand Prairie to get in the faces of our government peeps, with local businesses, the college, and many other partners that help make Grand Prairie so great, is always a good thing, and you know, sometimes I wonder, are we doing the right thing, and I talked with their CEO Burke about it, and he said, no, it was a success, and it keeps being a success, the day that the Edmonton people don't show up and we get half the people we asked to come, is probably when we should rethink it, but it's good to be forefront in the minds of government as many times as possible. Also, there was a kind of a week of goodbyes, so I said goodbye, I helped to say goodbye to Amanda Westwater, who's been a loyal City of Grand Prairie employee for many, many years, she's gone above and beyond her calls of duty to ensure that us cats were herded in the right direction and that things were done with the greatest of these, so thank you very much to Amanda for all your work with council, and best of luck in your future endeavors. And of course, Wendy Bosch, how could I, how could I not say goodbye to that lady? I was lucky enough to join councillor O'Connor and councillor Bosch for her last official duty, breaking bread at IPTAR, so that was- So that was really nice to be able to be a part of that. For Wendy, we didn't get a picture or anything, but we wanted one, we maybe should have got one. We missed on all those, but to Wendy, I know you're not far, you're still with the Chamber of Commerce, so we're going to be rock step a lot of the way still. It was just such an honor to, to serve with, with you as a friend. I know I got her into this gig. I told her she was going to run for council about six months before she actually decided to and I just kept pushing her. Well, she'll tell you, I literally first turned to this gig. But anyways, no, no, it's not because she still had free will at the end of the day. Sorry everyone, you can't hear the sidebars, but in reality Wendy went from being somebody who asked lots of questions to someone asked very thoughtful and tenacious questions and her growth was astounding. So at this council term and I really thought she'd be serving a second term on here, but best of luck with the chamber and, and all the good things to come. Finally, I was honored to be able to attend the candlelight unveiling of the Women of War Memorial at Veterans Memorial Garden with councillor Blackmore, giving greetings as deputy mayor. There we were able to honor World War II veteran Doris Garrett, as well as be bear witness to the blessing of Brigadier General Vanessa Hanrahan, which was a big honor and a wonderful blessing if you were there. I got it all on tape, but not on my camera, so hopefully they'll share it out on social media. Thanks for listening to me everyone.
Thanks for that councillor Theeson. We're going to skip back, councillor O'Toole had a few items he forgot to mention.
Well, I don't want to be accused of telling a lie, but it was only 20 years in business, not 30. But you got to remember, I'm an older guy and there's lots of information beings mentioned at that little celebration. So I apologize, but 20 years in business is a phenomenal number considering the growth that they've done in those years. So that's my report, finally.
Okay, thanks for that councillor O'Toole, councillor Blackmore.
Thank you deputy mayor Palat. It has, it has been a busy couple of weeks. I too attended the farewell coffee for Amanda Westwater, who has joined the dark side at the Grand Prairie Public School Board. I know that she'll enjoy herself there, but not as much as when she was with us, of course. I attended an airport commission meeting. This was the meeting where our draft audited financial statements were presented. No surprises will be coming forward to council when those audited statements are filed with our own finance department. Very smooth sailing there. I attended a night with Grand Prairie in Edmonton where we met with many of the province's MLAs and quite a number of business people from Edmonton attended as well. One in particular told me that in Edmonton, it's just simply accepted that a night with the Grand Prairie is the place to be. So I, I think that's pretty good. Coming back from there, I attended the Bear Creek Folk Festival reveal along with some other members of council. I personally am really excited to hear Serena Ryder take the stage at the Folk Festival again and also Jewel, or those are two groups that I'm really looking forward to. I attended an Economic Development Advisory Committee meeting along with councillor Berg, who is the chair of that committee. We, we talked a lot about tariffs, probably not surprised by that. And then last week I attended AB Munis Spring Caucus along with some members of council and also had a meeting there with municipal affairs minister MacIver. I don't know if we managed to press home any points, he's pretty good at sidestepping them. I, I really did enjoy the premier's comments and her live Q and A. I, I felt that there was some really, it was a really good discussion and I was very impressed and my husband was very impressed that Grand Prairie managed to be in the lineup of questions twice with both councillor O'Connor and councillor Bressi. I attended the Women of Influence Awards and I wanted to congratulate the winners because you know, they're not really winners, they're people who, women who floated to the top of a list of really phenomenal people. The, the young girl who won the Next Generation Award is Ella Dobovich. The game changer was Melissa St Pierre, who owns Pedals and Posies Downtown. Workplace leadership went to Christie Doucette. Miranda La Roche at the Friendship Centre won the Community Leadership Award and I think that all of us have had, have been in meetings with Miranda, she's very good. And finally, the Lifetime Impact Award went to Lori Grant, who's not very tall, but she's pretty tall in other ways, takes up a lot of space, she's great. I also attended the Recognition of Women of War, which was the unveiling of the Women of War Memorial and celebrates women in war throughout history. So while they recognize some women from Grand Prairie who took place, who, who did work in the Second World War, really the unveiling of the War Memorial is to recognize women's role in war throughout history. At that same time, it was great to sit down and chat again with Brigadier, Brigadier General Vanessa Hanrahan. Her promotion to Brigadier General puts her in charge of the provost wing of the Armed Forces, which in terms that we're more familiar with, really means the military police. She's also not very big, but she's a tightly packed piece of dynamite. And it was really nice to have a chance to talk with her again. I haven't seen her for about a year and I'm always so amused by the story she tells me. And that concludes my report.
Thanks for that councillor Blackmore, councillor Bressi please.
Great, thank you. Well, I for one am kind of upset that you're not excited for her walk off the world. Earth, oh, that's embarrassing.
I don't, I don't even know what that is.
Yeah.
It sounds like a flatter society thing.
It's the headliner I'm most excited for. Although I'm excited for Serena Ryder and my wife is very excited for Jewel. A few things I got to attend was, this was not in Grand Prairie, it was in Edmonton. It was purely personal matter, but I thought that council would be interested. I went to the Slush Cup Soccer Tournament in Edmonton, which allegedly is the largest youth soccer tournament in North America, over 500 games played. So definitely think relevant and germane is some work we're doing that we're just down the highway from the largest youth soccer tournament in North America. I got to attend the healthcare task force along with councillor Berg, Mayor Clayton and members of administration. This is a group that, I remind council, we directed meet occasionally to guide our physician attraction strategy. And so we got to hear some updates about the exciting work our administration is doing and give a little bit of guidance about what should come back to council in the future. And I'm really proud of the work that our staff are doing to build relationships with HS and Alberta Health and more importantly, to build relationships with physicians already in our community and future physicians who will be in our community. So thank you to everybody who's involved in that. Just between council sessions, I got to attend the Golden Age Centre 50 year anniversary with councillor O'Connor. It was ironic and kind of cool to, about an hour or so after we passed our aging well together strategy, to go and get to celebrate such a significant milestone with the Golden Age Centre. And we had to leave a little bit early just as the delicious smelling dinner was coming out, but we did get to hear a few speeches about the history of the Golden Age Centre and all the people that have made it possible. So thank you to the decades and decades and decades of volunteers that have made that important organization. As was already mentioned, we had an Alberta Munis Municipal Leaders Caucus as well as President Summit. Thank you for those of you that made the time to go out there. I think the most interesting part for me, other than getting to get in front of ministers and the premier to share advocacy priorities, was a session with mid-sized cities where we got to hear how a couple of other cities are doing their capital budgets in ways that are getting them better prices for, for their taxpayer dollars. And so there's some specific ideas there that I look forward to bugging C-Hobrick and our CFO about in the, in the future. I think they could be good here. And then I also had an Alberta municipalities board meeting, it was a busy meeting, the two highlights of it where Alberta Health came in to talk about the healthcare restructuring we've got in Alberta right now. So appreciated getting to provide some municipal input on that. And of course, we were quite busy with the budget and communicate, unpacking and communicating the provincial budget. And just the real quick highlights of the budget is, as Alberta municipalities, we're really excited to see the province fully restore grants in place of taxes. They're paying their full, well, in two years, they're going to be paying their full property taxes again for provincial buildings that are in municipalities, for the city of Grand Prairie. My understanding is that's worth about a quarter million dollars, so really appreciate that. Also really appreciate them continuing commitment to low income transit. That's really important for a lot of our residents and for some of our businesses as well. Weren't so excited to see them cut the local growth sustain, growth and sustainability grant, which was a new program that they started just last year. Supposed to be a three-year program, but it turns out it's going to only be a one-year program. And that's really disappointing because most of the, all of, actually I should just say rather, all of the application-based provincial infrastructure programs were ineligible to apply for. That was the one that we as a city can actually apply for that's application-based. So really disappointed to see that cut. And I think the biggest disappointment in the provincial budget was the provincial property taxes are going up. Rates are going up about 6% plus assessments have gone up, so the province is going to be collecting about 14% more property taxes next year than it did, or this year than it did last year. And of course, I think that's going to be a problem for our residents who have to pay more. And I think we're going to have to have some conversations about how do we very clearly communicate that to our residents, that that's the province downloading costs to them. That being said, I do have to give credit to both Minister MacIver and Premier Smith. Both of them are really clear that they fully expect us to really clearly communicate that to our, to our residents. So I did appreciate them saying that and I think we should take them up on their suggestion and we should very, very clearly communicate that to our residents. And so that's my report.
Thanks councillor Bressi, mayor Clayton.
Thanks deputy mayor Palat. Any of the things that have been mentioned already, I just wanted to mention some of the things that I did. I brought greetings at the mentioned Alberta boreal water management conference on behalf of council. It's great to see a room full of purely engaged people on the future of water management. So thanks for that opportunity. Attended the provincial budget in Edmonton as well as the evening with Grand Prairie, where we had an opportunity to update Edmonton and the MLAs and ministers about the work we've been doing in the last year. However, also an opportunity to have conversations about future investments and opportunities into Grand Prairie and our region. Recently with CAO Burke, had the opportunity to meet the Special Olympic ambassadors. To get a chance, these two individuals are our ambassadors as we gear up for Special Olympics summer and I can tell you they're very engaged in the community and they will continue to be out and about and see and may run into them. I brought greetings on behalf of council of the technical search and rescue vehicle unveiling. Also as mentioned, thanks councillor Berg, participated in the fashion show of Black History Month Gala, which was one of those things that you put your hand up to do and often second guess your decision, but it was a lot of fun and a great event. So thanks for mentioning that councillor Berg. Also attended a community rail advocacy alliance meeting, getting an update in regards to where our next direction is in advocating for better rail service and the rail disparities that many industries face. Thanks councillor Theeson for mentioning the, let's say, the leaving of Amanda Westwater. Amanda has supported myself and council for many years and was an individual who had foresight and, and sometimes did things without even having to ask. So she will be missed. And councillor Bosch definitely brought all of her heart and, and great wisdom to the table in what she represented and she will be very missed around the council table. But saying that, I've already had my first opportunity to have a meeting with her as well as chairman John Anderson and introducing them to an individual in our community who had some great ideas that I thought would be best served by the chamber. So great to see Wendy transition into that role. Also recently met with the, with MLA Dick and MLA Weed and minister Newdorff as council's probably number one priority in regards to electricity distribution. Had the privilege of asking a question at Alberta Munis and it's something that I know all of my colleagues as well as many municipal electeds across the act of service area will continue to keep at the forefront of conversations with ministers and MLAs across Canada. We are continuing that advocacy. It's extremely important that we don't put our foot off the gas as the, the gap is widening between what act of service area municipalities such as ours are paying in comparison to Edmonton and Calgary. It's now up to three and a half times more in certain areas. So had a meeting with minister Newdorff, talking about opportunities and pushing that agenda item. So thank you for my colleague's support and asking questions at Alberta Munis. It's important that we don't let up on that one. Brought greetings on behalf of council and read the proclamation for the Women of Influence Awards. As mentioned, great women that represented our community were awarded last week and thanks to our administration for putting on an incredible event. It really was, you know, 250 women sold out event, recognizing the incredible work that these other individuals do in our community. And something to be noted, a record number of nominations. So as that event continues to grow, it's something that I think we should be proud of and thank you to administration for the hard work. I as mentioned, attended the Alberta Municipalities Spring Caucus, but it was a great, there was some great takeaways for that for me. The mid-sized city one was an opportunity where, thanks councillor Bressi, giving me the opportunity to talk about how we use data in our most recent intermunicipal collaboration framework agreement. And, and, and really I had many colleagues after thanked me for that conversation because we are a little bit ahead of the curve in regards to the approach that we took in our ICF. Met with minister MacIver to talk about some of our concerns and advocating for continued support, talking about G-Pot and many other opportunities. Last week, as mentioned, attended that healthcare task force meeting. I think as this unfolds with the team of ambassadors, it will be a great addition to the work that Invest GP and our organization and council are already doing in regards to attraction and retention of healthcare professionals. And last but not least, last Friday brought greetings on behalf of council at the farm family dinner where we recognized the Aldi family, who if you know, and I know councillor O'Connor knows them well, if you know the Freisty bars or if you know Haskap berries, you know the Aldi family. So they were recognized for their dedication to food processing, to farm to table initiatives and the work that they do within agriculture. So it was great to see them recognized. And with that, I wish you all good evening and I'll see you soon. Thanks councillor, or Palat rather.
Hey, thanks for that mayor Clayton. I'll just highlight a few things that haven't been asked. I had a Grand Prairie Local Immigration Partnership Meeting that I attended last week. Very excited about the biometric scanners. It was just before it was announced publicly that it was announced to them and so they were very excited and were very grateful for the advocacy work that we have done on their behalf. From there, we approved our terms of reference and then we had a great conversation about this new integration roadmap booklet that we're coming up with. It'll be a great tool for people that move to Grand Prairie. It's got everything from where you shop, where you're going to live, all the, all the stuff that's going to help you get set up in our community. From there, we switched the conversation a little bit about our municipal census and it switched directions a little bit in that although we made this great roadmap, there was a comment that really resonated to me with, with all the temporary foreign workers that may not get their extensions. We're going to have to help people exit the community maybe at some point as well, which is not something I thought we'd be happy to deal with, but unfortunate. And a stat that was thrown out in that meeting that really hit home was 92, 92% of the Ukrainians that have come to Grand Prairie want to stay here. So it just shows you what a welcoming community and just hopefully we can retain as many of those folks as possible in our community. From there, I just wanted to highlight again, the, the night in Edmonton had, I feel like of all the years that I've went, this was the most optimism I've heard from developers outside of the region and inside of the region. Want to be cautiously optimistic, but I feel like there's some, some potential projects coming our way and it was, it was just nice to see that optimism and hear that optimism from proponents that have been on the fence for quite a while. From there, I attended the AB Munis Spring Caucus. I really want to thank councillor Bressi for his work at AB Munis and as well, mayor Clayton's an absolute beast in that provincial level. The amount of connectivity the city of Grand Prairie has now with, around the province and with our MLAs, I've never seen it before. Last term, we could barely get a meeting with a minister. We had a one-on-one meeting with minister MacIver with Reeve Bow, sorry, geez, Reeve Marshall as well attending, just to show how collaborative our region is. But even that night, we got to have a supper with him and councillor Blackmore had mentioned it's a hard gentleman to break, but the fact that we had his ear for just about three hours in the same day to keep harping on the same issues we're having in our region, just again, I can't thank mayor Clayton enough to get us in those conversations because last term, we didn't have a lot of those. In this term, it feels like we're, I hear our, our proponents go up or our delegates go up to speak and without even introducing themselves, most of the ministers know Dylan and Jackie by name and that, and that's a really good spot for Grand Prairie to be in. Well, and, and Mike O'Connor tends to find people's attention as well. But I just, I really again, want to thank mayor Clayton for all that work. I know it doesn't get noticed in our community a lot, but it's, it's showing great, greatly when we go to those meetings, just how well we're received from those ministers and from the premier herself. So thanks for that. And with that, I will adjourn. Have a good night everybody.